My second, 2022. Our invocation this evening will be offered by Anthena Rolovo, member of the Church of the Rock, Christ the Rock Church, my apologies. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
It's Anthia.
Anthia. If you would please come forward, if everybody would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, this evening, we just want to say thank you firstly for the breath of life. We don't, we don't want to take this for granted. We want to say thank you that we get to see this day, this moment, this hour. And Father, we just pray that you would reside in, in this meeting tonight. I pray, Lord God, that your Holy Spirit would be here, that for everything that is going to transpire, that will be spoken of, Father, we pray for resolutions. We pray for witty inventions. We pray for good ideas. We pray, Lord God, that whatever you have planned for this city of Independence, we pray that your plan would come to fruition. You said in your word that many are our plans, but your purpose will prevail. So tonight, we pray, Lord God, that we, we want to give you our plans and ask you, Lord Jesus, just to take control. I pray for everyone present here tonight, and those who are still on their way, that you would bless them indeed, bless them, their spouses, their families, and whatever they do, their businesses. Father, I pray, Lord God, for, for the city of Independence, that, Father, we would lead them well, that, Father, we would take back the city, that, Father, we would also claim good things to happen in this city. Father, we just pray for your many blessings, because you have a good plan for us, and we thank you for that. And I pray for everyone here tonight, that you bless them indeed, and keep them safe in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
DeLucy.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Weir.
Here.
We have two citizens who have requested to speak to the council tonight. The first is Tara Cruzey, who wishes to speak to the council regarding police help. Ms. Cruzey.
Good evening, City Council and Madam Mayor. I am here tonight because I am scared and helpless. I am begging you for help. I ask that you listen, honestly listen to me, because I have nowhere else to turn. There are only three people on the dais who have taken the time to actually see what I and my neighborhood have done, so let me briefly explain. I started a neighborhood watch of 250 houses about four years ago, and we now have 550 houses. We have become a community who looks out for each other. We do this through a Facebook page, along with a lot of activities that bring us all together. I make myself available to those 550 houses 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Over the weekend, there were shots fired calls in District 3 and 4 placed to 911 and non-emergency. These shots were heard on several cameras between the hours of 8:00 PM and 12:40 AM. IPD never responded. At 12:30, I had a single mother hiding in her house with her children calling me for help because she was terrified. Several people called it in and were met with a very frustrated dispatch officer. Several other people didn't even bother calling it in because the same frustrated dispatch officer has been less than helpful in the past, and because they no longer think IPD will show up. Remember, this is a shots fired call. In no way, shape, or form do I blame IPD or dispatch. The pressure that they are under is, I'm sure, frustrating and infuriating at best. There has to come a time that we quit talking about the problem and start working together to fix the problem. If we don't have the manpower, then we must have the technology in place with shot spotters and whatever else we can to keep all of us safe. My 23-year-old daughter bought a house in District 1 last year, and in November, there was a homeless man sleeping in her car. IPD was called three times and never responded. I have a nuisance house with domestic violence and drug activity that has been called in so many times I've lost count over the past year, and IPD has responded three times, never once contacted the neighbors who have video footage or answered the actual call to the person who called in. People who have lived in my neighborhood, all of their lives are moving because we, the citizens, are no longer safe. We no longer even have the perception of safety. It is to a point where we no longer assume anyone is going to respond. I don't care about politics. I don't care about your differences. I don't care about the drama. I don't care anymore. I am begging you all to put that aside to protect the citizens. I am begging you for help. I am begging you to work together, together for action now.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth Love, who wishes to speak to this council regarding city regulations and charter. I think that's what it says, Mr. Love.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Just a few weeks ago, our city manager sat right where he's sitting tonight and stated, with the ongoing investigations with IPD, he would be open to any and more ongoing investigations. I'm still waiting for the more part to happen. So with that being said, and hearing tonight of what I just heard, we don't have a chief of police here right now. We don't have a city attorney here right now, per the city charter. City charter says full-time attorney, not part-time. Thank you, though. What we have is a city manager that has tried to cover up so many things, but Missouri Sunshine Law allows it to be uncovered, just as it has been uncovered by Channel 41 News and others. The city manager continues to lie and lie to the public. Since the majority of the council is here tonight, and Councilman DeLucy, Via, the Webex.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. I am asking you, the city council, Madam Mayor, to open an executive order here tonight to bring upon a vote to fire, and I say it again, fire, the city manager for not doing what he said he would do, covering up his basis, running his own investigation of the city of Independence and IPD. He has not only lied to the public, he has lied to each and every one of y'all sitting up there tonight by saying he would get to the bottom of it. We ain't got to the bottom of nothing. With that, I ask again that y'all come to an open executive order meeting tonight to fire Zach Walker. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to speak to the council tonight? Okay, this brings us to our proclamation. Madam City Clerk.
Whereas engineers provide the talents and skills necessary to analyze and solve complex problems and create the infrastructure essential for the high quality of life which citizens of Independence enjoy. From planning and designing to construction and operation, professional engineers ensure a high quality of life through the safe use of public infrastructure. These contributions maintain the health, safety, comfort, and economic vitality of the community and overall society. Whereas this is the 71st Annual Engineers Week through a ceremonious luncheon, which will be held at the Marriott in downtown Kansas City on February 24th. Now therefore, Eileen Nwier, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, hereby proclaims Engineers Week as February 21st, 2022, and encourages all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing quality infrastructure and to recognize the significant contributions which our engineers make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Please come forward and accept the proclamation. This brings us to our consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The city manager had asked for item 227, Resolution 22720 to be postponed indefinitely. I would ask for us to consider that separately. Are there any other items that any council member wishes pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, please call the roll on the consent agenda minus item 22720.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. I would move to postpone 22720 indefinitely.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I actually, so I seen the city manager's email on this, but what I'm curious is, what was, like, where did this come from? Because obviously, it wasn't a council member that supported it. Did it come from your office originally? And what was the thought process behind the original thought of doing it?
Yes, pardon me, council member. The, the job of the city manager is obviously to be responsive to the council and with some of the issues that the police department in particular recently, I was hearing the council was shocked, appalled, aghast, dumbfounded by some of the overtime usage. This was an issue that's been brought up in prior contract negotiations, so we wanted the council to at least have an opportunity to be made aware of that, but believe it would benefit from additional conversation before bringing it for final consideration.
So do you expect this to be brought up in future contract negotiations?
I would expect it would. I can't speculate how far it will go, but I would expect that, yes, this is something we'll have conversation with our labor leaders about.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Motion passes. Our first public hearing is for the application by Jeremy and Amy Taylor requesting a special use permit to operate a body art shop business at 217 South Main Street. This is new information only. Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This special use request was considered by Planning Commission on January 11th. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of the special use. This is to operate a body art shop at 217 South Main Street. It's the former location of a tavern. I have no new information to add.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-009, An Ordnance Approving a Special Use Permit to Operate a Tattoo Shop at 217 South Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none? Oh.
Yes, I was wondering, Councilman, first district, did you have any, I didn't hear anybody have any comments about this. Did you have any objections from anybody, or?
Sure, thank you for the opportunity. So I have met with Ms. Paxton, my aunt, and Jeremy just met him today. So she took the liberty and met with the Independent Square Design Committee several months ago before the Planning Commission, and we talked and got some of her thoughts and views and what they're wanting to do there for a tattoo parlor. My office has no objection moving forward.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes. Our next public hearing is for the application by Habitat for Humanity requesting a rezoning from I-1 Industrial and C-2 General Commercial to C-3 Service Commercial for the properties located at 501 and 505 North Dodgden Avenue. This is new information only. Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you again. This rezoning application was considered also on January 11th. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. What this is, is it's taking the property that 501 and 505 Dodgden Street from an I-1 and a C-2 Historical District to a C-3 and a C-3 Historical District. There is a young school building for educational services that Habitat is going to restore, and this is the best zoning to make both of those locations work. I have no new information to add.
Are there any comments or questions to the council on the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-011, An Ordnance Approving a Rezoning from District I-1 Industrial and District C-2 HL General Commercial Historic Landmark to District C-3 Service Commercial and District C-3 HL Service Commercial Historic Landmark for 501 through 505 North Dodgden Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes. Our next public hearing is for the application by Shamar Bakhta requesting a rezoning from O-1 Office Residential to C-2 General Commercial for the property located at 4535 South Herman Court. This is new information only. Mr. Arroyo.
Yes, this rezoning application was also considered on January 11th. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this. This will take a vacant property, rezoning it to a C-2 for a Marriott brand hotel construction. This is just west of the existing Candle Suite Hotels. I have no new information to add.
Are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-012, An Ordnance Approving a Rezoning from District O-1 Office Residential to District C-2 General Commercial for 4535 South Herman Court in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes. Madam City Clerk, this takes us to our second readings.
Bill number 22-007, An Ordnance Vacating an Existing Unconstructed Right-of-Way of All That Part of Paradise Lane Line-In On and Across Lots 135 to 139 and Parts of Lots 134 and 140 of State in Place, Lots 55 to 149 inclusive, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes.
Bill number 22-008, An Ordnance Amending Article 30 of Chapter 1 of the Independent City Code pertaining to the Composition of the Heritage Commission. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes.
Bill number 22-010, An Ordnance Authorizing the Acceptance of Funding from the U.S. Department of Justice, U.S. Marshal Service through the Joint Law Enforcement Operations Task Force for the use by the police department, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes.
Bill number 22-013, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 8 of the City Code of the City of Independence by adding regulations related to wage enforcement on city-supported development projects. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordnance passes. This brings us to our first readings. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-014, An Ordnance Authorizing Final Disposition of Certain Police Department Audio and Video Records That Have Met All Requirements to Be Eligible for Such Disposition. Bill number 22-015, An Ordnance Authorizing Issuance of a Purchase Order to Genesis Environmental Solutions, Inc. for Contract Basin Number 3 Protective Coating Systems Replacement at the Courtney Bend Water Treatment Plant for $442,270, authorizing future change orders not to exceed $44,227 and/or time extensions as deemed appropriate, and appropriating $76,497 from the water fund net assets.
Okay. This brings us to council member comments. I'll start on my right with Councilman Stewart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question for the city manager. We, we had passed, passed a resolution, I'm not sure how long ago it was, about using people's time for COVID sickness, and you said it would take about 30 days for you to come up with something. Do you have any update on that?
Yes. We have looked at the calculations on that. As you recall, the, the initial resolution was for first responders specifically. The council asked us to calculate that for all of our employees. During the period of time in which the state of Missouri had a workplace presumption for COVID-19, and then the 30 additional days that the city of Independence expanded that beyond the state requirement, we had 385 employees who took leave, which resulted in total payroll and workers' compensation costs of $730,000. If you divided that by the average employee, which of course, it wasn't equal, and then multiplied that by our total workforce, you're looking at about $2.2 million in payroll and workers' compensation costs. So our recommendation would not certainly be to, to apply that because of the cost associated with it. If the council wanted to look at having a presumption regarding future pandemics and place that into the personnel policies, that's certainly something we could explore, but I think we would want to make sure it's thoughtfully applied, because in its broadest sense, that 2.2 was only, of course, based off of about a four to five-month window, so the cost would be exponentially more than that.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Perkins.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Huff.
Yes, I've had a tremendous amount of phone calls, and I would like to read something this evening that I wouldn't pass out these to the council first. Some of the questions for Becky. So I'll get this thing rolling here. Mayor and council members, the council has the authority with the obligation to the taxpayers to ensure impartial investigation and conducted, and conducted regarding the police issue, the police overtime issue. The city manager, without conferring with the city council, hired a law firm and developed limited scope of an investigation that excludes his office. Councilman Stewart stated at our last council meeting to the city manager that the city manager must be included in this investigation. I submit, the city manager should have engaged in the full council and sought approval from the span and the depth of this investigation. The council was not asked what scope, perimeters, and points of interest should be addressed in the investigation of the overtime issue. At minimum, the scope of the investigation should have included all departments involving personnel, payroll process, and including the city council. Council members and citizens' input should be allowed to impose relevant questions for investigate, investigative report. The taxpayers deserve a comprehensive, independent forensic audit, full disclosure, and transparency in the conduct and findings of such an investigation of alleged misuse of public funds. The council also has a right to conduct their own investigation, determine the scope, perimeters, points of review, and appropriate funds to do so. I will seek a resolution to hire forensic investigative auditor to investigate and report on paying any classified employee overtime premium or straight time for work clearly outside their classified job description. The independent forensic audit should have no limitation of scope to reconstruct timeliness of actions, actors involved, when internal segregation controls or review exist, to also fix responsibility, determine if rules and statutes were violated, and to find the answer to a list of questions and concern posed by these council members. To maintain the public trust in the city fair and honest distribution of city resources, the taxpayers deserve a thorough, in-depth, independent forensic investigation audit of this overtime issue. I ask my fellow council members to join me in pursuing the truth in this matter by supporting a forensic investigation audit to learn exactly what transpired. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I have a question in regards to the external investigation.
Sure.
Is it concluded?
No, it has actually just begun.
I have asked to meet, I have asked for your office to schedule a time for me to meet with the investigator. Is that correct?
You sent me that note today. I believe I replied to you, if memory serves correctly, and said that because of some of the insinuations being made, I've asked Deputy City Manager Adam Norris to handle contact with the special investigator. The scope has not been limited to any one department or party, so he has passed it on to the special counsel that you'd like to be consulted and interviewed with some information you may have.
Have any other council members asked to meet with this investigator?
They've not reached out to me if they have.
Okay, so they have that opportunity.
They would, correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Steinmeier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this evening, I'd like, there's, I think there's a little confusion around how executive session would be handled if, if and when we decide, as hopefully my colleagues will at some point, get together to, to discuss where we're at, review the actions of, of our city manager as CEO of our city. I, I asked Mr. Cover a few weeks ago to, to share with us, to look at the contract, share with us items of importance, things we've done, things we've not done, that we have an obligation to do in the performance of, of Mr. Walker's office. And on February 11th, you responded to some things, and I, I've asked you before if you would just share the points that you brought, you brought forward as your, your legal opinion that we, and we were all sent those, and if, if you would just please, if you could cover those, those points. You brought three points up that I thought were very good and, and things that we, we should be aware of if, if we could do that. Do you, do you have that email in front of you?
I do have that email in front of me. To be clear, this just relates to the process of potentially discussing Mr. Walker, not anything substantive about his contract or performance or anything like that, correct?
Correct, and that's what I want. I just want the process to be informative for our citizens and for the council, my colleagues, to understand what his contract calls for, what our obligations to Mr. Walker is in his performance.
Okay, so there, the three points briefly that I make in that communication you're referring to is, one, how an annual evaluation is outlined, and there's a process in his contract that outlines exactly when and how that takes place. It refers to the governing body, which is all of you.
Right.
It's my understanding, and based on separate resolutions that I attached, that the governing body has delegated that to a personnel committee of the council, and that is how that, those evaluations have been handled, going back to before Mr. Walker was the city manager. So that's how that particular piece is, is handled. It happens in September of each year, is what the, the contract outlines.
Can I, can I ask one question? But you also include that, that Mr. Walker holds the ability to raise the issue of how that process is to be played out, correct, in his contract?
Yes, that would be correct.
Yeah, and do we have anything in writing? And I, I probably should have followed up with you, but it says unless the employee expressly requests otherwise in writing. Do we have anything in writing from him saying this is the way I'd prefer to do these reviews that you're aware of?
I don't have anything to that effect, no.
Okay, all right. But we do acknowledge that we're supposed to do it in September, according to his, his contract.
That's correct.
Okay.
The second piece is that all discussions related to his performance and evaluation shall be done in closed session unless he consents otherwise.
Has he consented otherwise?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so we're supposed to be in closed session to review him for his privacy.
Correct.
Yeah, so that we can't do an open executive session as some would like to see. We're obligated under the contract, and I think their Missouri statute, correct? That gives him privacy in review process.
You are obligated under the contract and authorized to under Missouri Reby Statute. That's correct.
Okay.
The third piece is about when the evaluation shall take place. The contract says it shall take place in September of each year. So to that effect, there is a set time when his formal evaluation takes place. That doesn't preclude a discussion about performance any other time of the year, but it does dictate when that evaluation, which is again outlined in the contract, when that takes place.
Okay. So, and I appreciate you doing that because I wanted folks to hear from you, your legal opinion on the contract and the way that we have conducted it. I still believe that we should, as colleagues, we should have a time where we sit down and help kind of go through some turbulent waters with our one employee that we have charge over, and so I'm
We have three employees.
Well, we don't have the analyst right now, correct?
So we have two employees.
And we need to add that. So, well, okay. So we have an obligation contractually with Mr. Walker.
We do have two employees.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. But in this particular case, I would like to ask that, or to move that we have an executive session next Monday at 5:15 if possible.
Motion fails.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Is there a specific topic? No, and I think we owe Mr. Walker the opportunity to sit collectively and see what we can do to be supportive, bring correction, whatever needs to happen. But right now, we're not having that. And so I think we owe that to the residents, the citizens of this city, as well as to Mr. Walker.
Okay, so, Mr., I was going to say, Madam City Clerk or Mr. Cover, you could answer this. The Sunshine Law does not just allow for a general closed session of the council without specific information about what is the purpose of the meeting. So that would need to be identified. Is that correct?
That's correct. So under, so as I pointed in my email, 610-021 subsection 13 relates to individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees. So that would, if that's, as I understand it now, if that's what you're wishing to discuss or performance-related issues, then that would be the appropriate section of the Sunshine Law to close, to have an executive session.
Okay. It's also a violation of his contract. So he'd have a suit against us if we choose to review him other than in September.
What? Without getting into liability issues, what I'm saying is, we couldn't, a formal review, as outlined in the contract, is limited to once a year in September. That wouldn't preclude a general discussion about performance-related issues. It just can't be, the evaluation has a specific process and form that's used. That would not be done now because it's not the appropriate time. It wouldn't preclude just a general discussion about performance and other related issues.
Does the Sunshine Law preclude that?
No.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Madam City Clerk.
Is there a date and time for this meeting?
It's for Monday, 5:15.
5:15, thank you.
And the stated purpose of the meeting?
Under section 13, it would be individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees. You wouldn't name a specific employee.
No, I understand. Is that your intention, Councilman?
Is that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hough.
Yes.
Perkins.
No.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
No.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
No.
Mayor Weir.
No. Motion fails. Anything else?
No, nothing more. Thank you.
Councilman Hobart.
I just want to say that even though for some reason, Karen, your picture is not up on the screen. I know that Becky can see it, so she counted all your votes.
I did.
And while we don't always agree on much up here, I do, will say this. We at least like you, or most of us love you at least. And we just are thinking about you and want you to get through your treatment and do well.
I am.
And get back, get back in here. So let's get busy.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember DeLucy, I neglected to call on you, so I will do so now for any comments that you would like to make this evening.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We unfortunately have some more very sad news within our city ranks. We lost another very valued member of our city team, city engineer Mike Winkler with Municipal Services. So I would ask everybody to continue to keep his family, his colleagues, our city family, who works so closely together, and your thoughts and prayers as we face yet another very difficult loss for, within our city employment. Mr. City Manager, anything else this evening?
Madam Mayor, just very quickly, I'd like to ask Adam Dustman to stand. Adam Dustman is the chief of police, serving in that role right now. So I just wanted to make sure the council and community, despite some of the comments you heard tonight, is fulfilling those duties and doing so very admirably. And I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
We're adjourned.